Well, I know some of us have had this previous opportunity to meet with Dr. Cudd. But I think it's great, and we welcome you to City Hall. Thanks for being here, and we wish you the very, very best.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. It's great to be here, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm really very excited to be in Portland. My husband Neil and I arrived in Portland only last week. We've bought a house in Portland Heights and has kind of that view of Portland, which is beautiful and the Mount Hood. We drove across from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania on our own Oregon Trail, and we're really excited to be here. So just a little bit of background on me. I'm an academic throughout my career. I have a 35-year career in academia. I'm a social and political philosopher. I study themes of capitalism, oppression, inequality, and feminism. And I spent the first 25 years of my career as a philosophy professor at the University of Kansas, and then moved into higher-level administration as the dean of the College of Arts and Sciences at Boston University. So my first real taste of an urban university. And then I became the provost at the University of Pittsburgh, which is also where I got my PhD. So it was a little bit of a homecoming there as well. So I come here to Portland State to be the president. When Neil and I were first married, we thought about where do we want to live? Where would be the ideal place? And we landed on Portland. Well, it took us 35 years. But when I saw the ad for Portland State University, and I really looked at its mission to let knowledge serve the city and to open doors of opportunity to students, I said, this is the place, this is the opportunity. So I didn't wait for a headhunter to come to me. I went straight to the search committee and said, I want to be a candidate. So I'm really happy to be here. And I'm here to partner with you and to renew the relationship with the City of Portland and Portland State University. So I believe that our fates are linked and that we have a responsibility to our stakeholders, to our students, our faculty, staff, and the community, to work together for transformative action to renew our city and our university. I look forward to meeting each of you in the coming months so that we can strengthen our connections. And here are just a few of the ways that I believe we can work with you to build the future. First, in building a talent pipeline. PSU is the most diverse university in Oregon. We're actually a minority-serving institution, and we're committed to ensuring success for all of our students. We aim to address challenging skills gaps and worker shortages for the city and the region as we provide opportunities for social and economic mobility for our students. Over 70% of PSU students stay within Oregon, and 80% of those live within the three-county region. For example, half of Oregon's social workers are PSU alumni. PSU is a partner for the city and other major employers in addressing talent needs. And secondly, in the area of innovation, we will continue to work with you to advance the technologies needed to implement the city's climate action plan. For example, we're working together with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and Prosper Portland as conveners of the Clean Energy Initiative Partnership. And our National Science Foundation Engines grant is helping us to research and operationalize smart grid technologies that will enable efficient and safe delivery of power with enhanced use of renewable energy. Smart grid and related technologies offer opportunities for new companies to enhance Portland as the most competitive place to develop and implement clean technologies that will address the climate crisis. And thirdly, in the area of place development, PSU is already a partner with the city in developing and testing new approaches to the homelessness crisis. We are also ready to be a partner in attracting more people to live, work, and play downtown through our role as an implementer in Advanced Portland Economic Development Plan and by adding to the existing community assets of South Downtown. We're also committed to contributing to the civic dialogue about the future governance of the city and how we can drive further advances in equity and justice. These are just a few of the ways that PSU is ready to build upon our long and important partnership. You'll find over the coming weeks that our students, faculty, and staff will be back on campus and that we're committed to the vibrancy and quality of life in the city. So please consider PSU a think-and-do partner as you build and implement your plans for a vibrant, sustainable, and just future. We're here for you. Please count us in.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Commissioner Mapp?
Oh, sure. President Cudd, thank you so much for taking time out of, I know, what must be a very busy day. For those of you who haven't followed, I think this is day two. I have friends who work over at PSU. I can't tell you how excited they are to have you on the scene. I also really appreciate your commitment to extending the partnership between the City of Portland and Portland State, or the City of Portland and Portland State University. You know, I'm really excited for you. You have the great privilege of leading what I think of as being one of the greatest urban universities in America. I'll tell you, I've been around Portland for a long time, and the way PSU has evolved over the decades is just amazing. We had a much smaller footprint, frankly, a much less imaginative footprint. Now PSU is very much part of the lived experience of the city. You talked about some of the ways in which the city and Portland State partner, and I think you couldn't be more right here. You know, at the most basic level, one of the things that's just really true about PSU is that you are an important presence downtown at a time when downtown is really struggling. I am sure we're going to be in dialogue about how we keep our citizens and our sidewalks safe. So please be aware that we're here to be a resource to you. And that's Bobby, the mayor's chief of staff. I suspect before your time is done, you're going to get to know Bobby really well. I also want to say, I'm the commissioner in charge of public work, so I'm your water guy, your environmental services guy, your P-Bot guy. We partner with, we will partner with and rely on PSU for research all the time. You know, I need to have a vision for what population is going to look like 10, 20, 30 years out. We often go to PSU to help figure that out. So I appreciate your partnership there. You already talked about some of the ways in which PSU is already very much at the table as we're struggling with just the data, you know, the biggest challenges at the time, which I think in this city are houselessness and frankly, economic inequality. And that's one of the last things that I want to say right here. In a couple of minutes, we're going to take a look at the Portland Insight Survey, which asked Portlanders, you know, where the things, how do you feel about the city, what's your experience of the city? One of the things that really jumps through in this report for me and jumps through in basically every economic report that we look like, look at in the city is the growing inequality that we see in Portland. And one of the reasons why Portland State University is so important is that we know that the way to shrink the inequality gap is to invest in education, especially the kind of higher education that PSU provides. So we are very lucky to have you on the scene. We're very lucky to have Portland State as a partner, and I look forward to working with you for many years moving forward. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Commissioner Mapp.
I just, I want to congratulate you and, sorry about that, congratulate you and just, again, you referenced the Clean Industry Hub work. That's really exciting. We're really grateful to have PSU as a key partner in that, and it's just great to have you here. And so we look forward to our continued work together.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just welcome. Look forward to chatting with you more deeply. I'm the commissioner of public safety, so there's going to be a lot of intersection with your campus. My wife is an alum of the Social Work Program at Portland State. I've played many a soccer game on your campus as well. So look forward to the collaboration and is a very important partner in the City of Portland.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to extend the same thanks as my colleagues did. Commissioner Gonzalez is reminding me about the soccer games. I'd actually forgotten about that until he just reminded me. My daughter, when she was very young, also played there. And by the way, that is a non-trivial community resource, is the athletic fields and the other infrastructure that Portland State makes available to the public, and we all benefit from that. So thanks for that. I really appreciate you laying out your priorities, looking at some of the, you know, the talent pipeline issues. That's obviously critical to both our local as well as our national economy, the skills gaps, and the work that you do there. We've always benefited from the research opportunities and the educational opportunities that PSU provides. And I want to specifically shout out the Center for Public Service as well as the Center for Entrepreneurship. Those are two organizations within the PSU full that the City of Portland works very, very closely with, and we're always grateful for those relationships. I also appreciate your focus on climate and energy issues. Those are foremost in our minds. They don't always get the same attention as some of the other issues that the city is currently confronting, but they remain critically important issues. And PSU has shown itself to be a thought leader in those areas. And I, last but not least, since you mentioned Boston University, I actually just took my daughter on a college tour over the last week, and Boston University was one of the places we went. And I spent a lot of time over the course of the last week and asking, why is Boston so successful? Now, I lived there for 10 years, so I have some sense of its culture, its economy, its diversity, and frankly, its comparative wealth relative to what we have here in the City of Portland. But I think what really makes that city tick, what makes it successful in the wake of the pandemic, is the fact that it is a global education center. There are over 100 universities and colleges in Boston. And you said 70% of your graduates stay here. That's notable. And so I think, you know, not only are we struggling with some of the questions of the near term, I also think we need to think about, what does the university look like 50 years from now? What does the city look like 50 years from now? And what role does higher education play in helping our city to be successful and sustainable over the long run? And I would love at some point to maybe pick your brain on this thought. But I really think the education infrastructure is one of the key differences between Boston and the rest of the country, and why it is so successful now relative frankly to a lot of other cities, including Portland, that are still struggling to come out of the pandemic. It's not solely because of higher education, but I'm convinced that that is a key ingredient and an important ingredient, and it'll become more important in the years ahead. So at some point, I'd like to explore that with you. But thank you for being here and taking your time. We appreciate you, and we wish you the very, very best. Commissioner Rubio?
Yeah, I have just a quick question that I thought of after I spoke, but I just want to lift up, is it, it's correct, right, that PSU is also about to, or considering being a Hispanic-serving institution?
Yeah, we are known as an emerging Hispanic institution, and we're going to be seeking the Hispanic-serving institution.
Well, that's, congratulations, and I know that you have an excellent person with you, Leader Cynthia Gomez, who's long been a champion of that. So very excited for that designation. And anything we can do to support, let us know.
Great. Thank you for mentioning that. Thank you for all those remarks, and you all together know even more about how Portland State University is partnering with the city, and I'm eager to learn more and to work more with you. So thank you for those remarks. I'd be eager to have the futures conversation that you suggest.
Yeah, definitely.
Mayor Wheeler.
Thanks, Madam President. Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is the August 2nd, 2023 morning session of the Portland City Council. Christina, good morning. It's good to have you in the clerk's seat today.
Good morning.
Please call the roll.
Good morning. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mappes?
Here.
Rubio?
Here.
Ryan?
Wheeler?
Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at wwwportland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you for that. First up is communications. First individual, please, Christina. Item 635.
Request of Gregory Baldwin to address council regarding homeless concerns, and they let us know they're canceling their request.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Next individual, 636, please.
Request of Jane Lacy to address council regarding Mount Tabor Maintenance Yard employee parking.
Welcome.
Hi, good morning. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Mappes, Councilwoman Rubio, and Councilman Gonzalez, staff and the community. My name's Jane Lacy. I'm an arborist with the City of Portland, Oregon, for the past 20 years. My work unit is located at 6437 Southeast Division Street in Portland. Our shop is under renovation for several years, and for over the last year, 100-plus colleagues and myself have had to, were forced to park outside of the Mount Tabor shop in the neighborhood of Mount Tabor. I'm here today to bring to light concerns for safety and security that my colleagues and I have on behalf of this renovation. Currently, we're just getting into fall, summer, fall, and before we know it, we'll end up having inclement weather, and then, you know, winter and darkness most of the day. I want to first bring to light that we're being forced to park in the neighborhood, impacting park user and neighborhood parking around Mount Tabor Yard. Secondly, there are no ADA-accessible crosswalks crossing Division Street in front of 60th and Division, and you need to go approximately five to eight blocks to access a public crosswalk. I myself brought to P-Bot a concern about a lack of ADA crossing. They did get back to me sometime later and say that due to a backlog of staffing, they are unable to view that concern for approximately three to four months, which will lead us into winter. My colleagues are having their cars stolen. Catalytic converters are being taken in paid parking lots that they're being forced to park in so that we can get to work. We are regularly being tardy because we can't find adequate parking. Some of my colleagues are unable to take mass transit because of where we live. A lot of us reside outside of the City of Portland due to housing impacts. I myself didn't buy groceries one week because I had an $85 parking ticket for parking in the wrong spot. That day, about seven of us made bad choices. I'm very worried that I brought multiple solutions forward to our safety committee, including Tonya Booker and our director, and they have not come up with reasonable solutions. Fencing off the long blocks, putting in security, the park rangers, so that we'd have security in a safe place, free of harassment, vandalism, and theft, taking our city rigs home if that is accessible in our contract, and the fact that they're violating our contract because it's a change in working conditions. Please help us cut the red tape and come up with a reasonable solution.
Thank you. Commissioner Mapp.
Janie, thank you for your testimony. Were your concerns impact P-Bot? I'll try to cut through some red tape. I'll have someone from my office reach out to you, and we will work with you to try to find solutions. And I also want to address my colleagues, although I think they know this well, versions of this problem, challenges keeping our employees safe, challenges keeping our property safe, literally come up every day in my line of work, and I know it comes up every day in the work that you do, too. For me, I think one of the lessons is, as we look at reimagining and restructuring our form of government, we, I feel like there is a branch of government that doesn't quite exist yet that we really need, and that would be something like a maintenance bureau that could go out and help folks like Janie. I know I could today file literally a dozen work orders for something like a maintenance bureau to clean up something, get, move people along, put up fencing, whatever we need to do to keep people safe. So Janie, I'll work with you on the transportation side. And colleagues, I certainly hope that as we think about what the future of Portland looks like, we begin to think about how we maintain the assets that we currently own. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I ask a couple of questions? First of all, thank you for bringing this to our attention. You are an employee of the Parks Bureau, is that correct?
Yes, for 20 years.
And the employees do have access to the management leadership of the Parks Bureau? Is that accurate or no?
Yes, it is through our safety committee, which is regulated and has to be provided to us through state law.
And were they involved in the renovation process and scoping some of these potential issues in advance?
I specifically brought to the safety committee, including Tonya Booker, who is on the committee as a senior manager, that we would need to have other accommodations for parking, and I gave them five reasonable solutions. My supervisor went above and beyond and contacted Warner Pacific. We've had catalytic converters stolen at Warner Pacific in paid parking lots that employees are paying out of pocket. It was shot down, then it was kind of revitalized, and then the amount for parking was more than we were told initially.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where the failure in leadership is. By the time an employee comes to testify in open testimony at City Hall, there's about 10 steps in my mind that have not been successful, and I'm trying to diagnose where the problem is. So maybe, I think Bobby had to take a, oh, there he is. Could we do a quick diagnosis, and then we'll talk to the commissioner in charge? But to be honest, this is the first I've heard of it, obviously. What solutions do you suggest, just out of curiosity? You said you'd put a number of solutions on the table. What are you suggesting we do?
Well, what I brought forth, and also the president of the safety committee brought forth, that we could fence the long block there that used to be a tree nursery on Lincoln. We have a nursery, and then there's a large portion of it that is just grass that people walk their dogs in. I thought about putting a chain-link fence around it and having a park ranger or two provide surveillance and security during our shift. People start work anywhere from 5:30 to like 7:00 AM, so, and then the day would run till about 4:30.
So you could do that within the Parks Bureau, could you not?
Yes, we could. Now, we were told by management that the neighbors wouldn't like that. So that was how they shot us down. Secondly, I recommended that, since the contractor and their employees have parked in Mount Tabor Yard the entire duration of the project, that we probably could find parking also. And they said they would gladly accommodate us.
So here's what I would suggest, and again, you know, this is the first I've heard of it. A half an hour from now, I could consider these stupid ideas. So with that caveat, we have a program that we are rolling out called Portland Solutions, and it's intended to be based on our 90-day resets, and it is a neighborhood-by-neighborhood proposal. When we did the 90-day resets, we heard from lots of neighborhoods around the city saying, we want the same thing. It looks great. The results are really solid. We want the same thing. So we're creating this Portland Solutions program. While it is neighborhood-based, it is not exclusive, I mean, it's not differentiating between who is in the neighborhood. It's for It's for people who live there, people who work there, people who recreate there. So you definitely qualify, and maybe Bobby, what we could do is work with the Parks Bureau and see if we can get, you know, Mount Tabor is obviously a priority area for us to begin with, just based on what we hear from residents in that area. So there's, you know, likely, I can't promise you anything here today because I just don't know enough about it specifically, but we'll at least work with you and see if there is an overlay here with Portland Solutions. As for the infrastructural issues, the ADA ramps, I'll leave that to Mingus. He knows that stuff well.
We're just concerned that there could be a fatality since Division is the most dangerous street in Portland.
There are many fatalities along Division, and so it's, you know, not at all out of the realm of possibility or consideration. And I'm sorry the Parks Commissioner was not able to be here today.
I'll meet with him anytime.
We'll certainly communicate with him as well. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Janie.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. It was a pleasure. Thank you very much for listening.
Next individual, please Christina, item 637.
Request of Shayna Conote to address council regarding time, place, and manner of city code camping restrictions.
Welcome. Thank you, Bobby.
They were planning to join virtually. Doesn't look like they have joined.
Okay. Let's move on to the next individual, item 638, please.
Request of Lan Trong to address council regarding frustrations about Home Forward and Hollywood East.
Welcome.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yep, loud and clear. You sound great. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lan Trong. I'm here to tell you about the major issues in and around Hollywood East. A low-income apartment building located at 4400 Northeast Broadway that is run by Home Forward. Home Forward is failing residents at Hollywood East and making the lives of those living and working around Hollywood East very difficult. While there are residents of Hollywood East who would want, who just want to live nice, quiet lives, there are also residents and non-residents who make that impossible. There's rampant drug use and drug dealing in and around the building. I have heard that drug dealers have taken over the top floor of Hollywood East, using that vantage point to keep watch of the neighborhood. One has even approached a neighbor of mine, trying to intimidate him. I have witnessed drug use and drug dealing out in the open in the street right in front of my home. I have seen people park their cars, stuff their pockets and backpacks with drugs, and go into Hollywood East. I have seen residents and non-residents approach shady cars parked around Hollywood East to buy drugs. I have called 911 multiple times on people passed out in their cars, unsure if they are overdosing. I have seen Hollywood East's garden beds being used as a place to hide and pick up drugs. I have concerns with how Home Forward is vetting residents. Recently, a guy moved into Hollywood East and has been caught on camera throwing rocks at buildings and cars. He has damaged a neighbor's car with a rock. He has been buying drugs from shady cars parked around Hollywood East. When I brought up my concerns to Home Forward officials, the pathetic excuse of "this is happening all over Portland" was given. I am tired of hearing this refrain. Home Forward officials are using it to normalize a very serious and dangerous situation. Hollywood East has become a blight on the neighborhood because of its poor management by Home Forward. In addition to the drug use and drug dealing, there have also been a number of suspicious deaths at Hollywood East over the years. There are also major issues with the building's trash compactor. It is constantly breaking down, causing dumpsters to overflow and garbage to pile up. If you would like to see photos of a mound of garbage around the Hollywood East apartments, I posted a couple on Nextdoor. Just go on Nextdoor and search "garbage issue at Hollywood East," and the photos will pop up. I have emailed my concerns about Hollywood East to the Noma County Health Department and a couple of commissioners. Apparently, none of these offices have any authority over Hollywood East or Home Forward, which I find shocking. If the city can't hold Home Forward accountable for their terrible management of Hollywood East, then who can? There are major issues at Hollywood East, and instead of addressing these issues, another massive low-income apartment building is slated to go up just blocks away at the Hollywood Transit Center. This new development is called the Hollywood Hub, and Home Forward will be involved with it. While I support affordable housing, I cannot support the Hollywood because I don't believe that it has been well thought out, and I fear that it will turn into another Hollywood East, especially with Home Forward being involved. I also fear that the Hollywood Hub could turn into another Bury Building, a low-income apartment building in Hazelwood that was recently featured in the Lamont Week for being a total disaster. The Bury Building has been open for less than three years, and it's already madness over there. I ask that you look at the Hollywood Hub development and reconsider it. I don't believe that the folks behind the Hollywood Hub, Bridge Housing, Host Architecture, and Hacienda CDC realize how bad the situation is over at Hollywood East and how fearful Hollywood residents and business owners are of the Hollywood Hub becoming a hellhole. I urge you to look into Home Forward and all the problems at Hollywood East. I urge you to reconsider the development of a Hollywood Hub. I look forward to hearing your solutions to the issues I spoke about. One solution I have to address the issues of drug use and drug dealing around Hollywood East is to introduce the police bike squad to Hollywood and surrounding neighborhoods. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Our Commissioner Rubio has a comment.
I just want to thank you, Lan, for your comments today, and I'm very, very sorry that you and all the other residents have had to manage the situation without a lot of support there. I'll tell you that this is something that we are actively talking about, and we'll continue to elevate this issue with Home Forward to the best of our ability, but thank you.
Thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. Next, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maps?
Mr. Mayor, this is not the first time this council has heard concerns about Home Forward, and frankly, even going back to the time when I worked in the city's crime prevention program and the neighborhood association system, we had problems like this going all the way back. And I think one of the challenges here is the unique nature of Home Forward. Well, I think that we've partnered with Home Forward on some projects. I don't, I believe Home Forward is kind of like its own government. Commissioner Rubio, can you, I hate to put you on the spot, can you explain?
It's independent from the city, and it has its own governance system.
Right. So Home Forward is kind of like its own government, sort of like TRIMID is to, so I know in various capacities throughout my career, I've tried to work with them to make spaces like this safer. In fact, I think I might have even worked on this exact space a couple of years ago, and certainly since we've heard about it. I appreciate Commissioner Rubio's leadership in trying to bring out some reform on this particular building, and I encourage everybody who is having a challenge with Home Forward to both keep the city council in the loop, but also recognize and speak directly to Home Forward because they are an island in and of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your testimony this morning. Next individual, please, item 639.
Request of Jason Wilder to address council regarding timeliness and inaccuracies of police reports.
Welcome.
And Jason, could you just say your name for the record? Jason Wilder.
Thank you, sir.
Again, good morning. I came to see you approximately a year ago. I have tried to contact each of you. I hope that you received the police report that I provided via the councilperson or the clerk, the council clerk. I tried to make that available so that you had time to review it over the weekend, and hopefully it was read. I had a phone stolen from my home. I replaced it with the insurance at T-Mobile, which is, you know, fine. I replaced one phone with this phone. And then I was in a fight, which the police report details to an extent. This phone was destroyed in that fight. I was T-Mobile to replace it again, and I realize that the banking issues are not really as much of a concern for you, but I was forced to purchase this phone on installments due to lack of a police report. When you look at the police report that was provided to me, which by the way, I emailed Officer Schuman multiple times, I went down to the precinct multiple times, called him from inside the precinct, emailed him, I have all these items for you if you'd like to have those forwarded to you. However, the police report states that he spoke with the victim, who stated, I don't want to read it to you verbatim, however, it mentions that I described the gentleman, told him there was a scuffle, told him minor injury on my nose, glasses were broken, cuts and scrapes. However, why would I go to an officer? Why would I go to an officer over a fight? I mean, I obviously wasn't, I don't feel that I was gay-bashed. You know, I don't feel that I was, we had a fight. I'm not quite sure why the gentleman came back, and we had an altercation at the corner of, I believe it was Third and Burnside. I was knocked off the curb. I fell on my butt. My phone was in the back pocket. He threw the punch. He threw several punches. The police were even at the location where the altercation happened. When I went back to look for my glasses, there was, there were two cars and six policemen there. I mean, it was almost as if I were being laughed at. I have come to you about this police report before. Not only was I unable to obtain this police report, my friend Pat Mobley, who I went to college with, had to actually purchase it for me because apparently my, my request for the police report was not heard in any way, shape, or form. And I'm unsure why a friend of mine that I went to college with was able to obtain the police report who I contacted your office about, your office about, and your office, not yours. Anyway, I'm just not sure why a citizen who seeks, I didn't go to him to, I had damaged property over a fight. I did not start the fight. I defended myself. I went to him, described it, provided photos to one of your representatives, and still find myself standing in front of city council asking why my request for the police report, which at that time would have cost me, you know, I wouldn't have had to put installments on this, and I'm now $2,000 in debt. I am now in collections for $2,000 because apparently the timeliness and detail that goes into a police report and its availability to a citizen, it took me a year and a half and a friend, and I don't really understand that. So what I'm asking is, why? And I realize you don't, you may not have that answer, but I feel that there are people that are not being served by the police. And I would like to, I mean, $2,000 in collections now? And I don't understand.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your testimony. We let you go a little over because I was curious.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I do not have the answer.
Sure.
The timeframe does seem long. In just some preliminary digging around, I understand there were some communications issues, there was difficulty in communicating. That may have had something to do with the fact.
I even approached the DA. I approached Mike Schmidt to try to get ahold of the police report.
And I'm not, I'm not defending it. And in fact, I'll express my apologies that it took long or you felt that you were not served the best you could have been. We obviously want to serve people well, and we want to serve people quickly. I think there was probably more to this story, and I don't have all of the facts, but I appreciate you coming forward and bringing this information.
Absolutely. Perhaps you may understand more why I asked you if I were welcome in the City of Portland.
I'm sorry?
Perhaps you may more fully understand why I asked you if I were welcome in the City of Portland.
Ah, yes. Okay. You certainly are.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Did any of the other communications folks come forward?
I brought you a gift as well.
No, I don't believe they did.
Oh, thank you. Sure. Appreciate it. All right. Very good. We'll go to the consent agenda. Any items Christina had been pulled off the consent?
We received no requests.
Please call the roll.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
All right. The consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item, please, number 640. This is a report.
Accept the 2022 Portland Insights survey report.
Before we get started today, I'd like to make a motion to amend the report to substitute the placeholder report, which was not completed, with the finalized version. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Maps. Any further discussion on the substitute? Hearing none, please call the roll on the substitute motion.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The substitute motion passes. Colleagues, today we're hearing about the 2022 Portland Insights survey. This community survey was a thorough and collaborative citywide effort led by the city budget office over the course of the past year. I want to thank the team and our partners at Portland State University's Regional Research Institute. We now have a rich data set on Portlanders' perceptions and satisfaction or dissatisfaction with the city and its services. The approach to the survey was innovative as well as rigorous. They engaged community in a way that we can now say that we have heard from Portlanders. This information is representative of our diverse communities and generalizable, how did this get into my talking points? Generalizable to Portlanders as a whole. After the 2019 pilot that CBO did, I'm glad to see this work continue and improve, and I look forward to additional information they will gather from focus groups in the fault to go more in-depth with people in a narrative way on items that were highlighted by this particular study. With this survey recurring every other year, it will be a way to track how we're doing over time and measure whether the changes we're making, including charter reform, are making a positive difference to Portlanders. The results of the 2022 survey reinforce what we've heard from Portlanders. People are concerned about homelessness, the cost of living, safety, and in my opinion, we're making progress on these issues. But the survey gives us more information about how those concerns and priorities show up differently for different groups within our population, and they can help us to make better policy and budget decisions. I look forward to working with the CBO team and my colleagues to think more about how we can incorporate this data into our budget process moving forward. And so with that, I will turn this over. I think Ruth, you're leading the charge here today. I'll let you take it from here. Thank you.
All right. Good. And then do we have the slides up? It looks like we do. Okay. Good morning, mayor and council. My name is Ruth Levine. I'm the Citywide Performance Manager in the City Budget Office. I'm excited to be here to present the findings from the 2022 Portland Insights survey with you. I'm joined today by two members of my team, Ning Jeng, Communications and Community Engagement Analyst, and Lilian Gwynn, Citywide Performance Management Lead. And then we also have Dr. Debbie Elliott here, representing our project partners from Portland State University. So I think we have 45 minutes with you here today for this presentation and discussion. During this time, we'll provide a brief overview of the project's goals and methods and highlight some of the key findings from the results. After that, we'll discuss next steps of how you can use these data and when the next phases of the ongoing survey will happen. And as you'll see, we have a lot of interesting data from the survey, and we're just going to cover the highlights here today. So please stop us with any questions as we go, and also, we're happy to follow up if you have, if you'd like to dig deeper on any of the data or you have any additional questions about the survey results. The full report is posted online. It has a lot more detail. And then in addition, we'll be posting an interactive online report on our website. That will be at, that is at wwwportland.gov/insights, so you can get a lot more information there. So what and why? The Portland Insights survey is a community satisfaction and priorities survey. It helps the city answer basic questions. How well are we doing? How can we better meet our community's needs? And how do we prioritize our resources to do that? Surveys like Insights are used by cities around the country as part of their efforts to incorporate data into their budget and policy priorities. These data can be thought of as part of the information ecosystem that the city has available to make well-informed decisions. It's also an avenue for residents to provide feedback on the city's services. The Portland Insights survey in this current iteration expands on the Auditor's Community Survey, which was discontinued due to budget cuts in 2016. After that, in 2019, CBO piloted the Insights survey for the first time, and then we now have ongoing funding for this and are making it a biennial survey, which will be used to track results over time. As you, as you'll hear in a moment, the questions in the survey and the methods were updated for the 2022 survey, and the result is a survey that gives, that gives us data both on community sentiments and community needs, and can be disaggregated to see how these findings differ across the diverse communities in Portland. At the end of the presentation, I'll speak more about some possible uses of this data, including in the budget process. But first, I'll pass it to Ning on our team to talk about the survey methods and results.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Good morning. Ning Jeng, City Budget Office. The Portland Insights survey has two components, the quantitative survey and the qualitative focus groups. Each is conducted biannually in alternate years. We conducted the first survey in 2022, and now we're planning the first focus groups this fall. Last year, we partnered Last year, we partnered with Regional Research Institute at Portland State University to update the 2019 pilot survey. We developed new questions that are more streamlined and relevant to decision-makers. We did extensive significance testing to make sure the findings are statistically significant. And the biggest step forward is the new sampling method or ways to recruit survey participants. To make sure we got representation from all communities the city serves, we used a hybrid approach to sampling. We combined randomized mail-based survey where we mailed 20,000, um, we mailed to 20,000 households that were randomly selected throughout Portland. At the same time, we supplemented that with the opt-in outreach-based survey, where we worked with community partners to directly reach out to those underserved communities to ensure adequate representation. Because of this scientifically rigorous approach to conducting the survey and the large number of responses, we now have represented, representative and generalizable results. The survey respondents represent the demographic diversity of Portland, and we can generalize the survey results to the Portland population as a whole. At the close of the survey, we received 5290 valid and completed responses. One thing to note is that 16% of them responded in the translated languages, including Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian, Vietnamese, and Chinese, which speaks to the great work from our partner organizations. Our sampling approach also led to demographic proportionality that was close enough to the population that allows us to weight the responses by geography, race, ethnicity, and age, and adjust the responses to better match the Portland population within a very small marginal error. Here is a chart showing the racial-ethnic distribution of the respondents compared to the population percentage in Portland. The dark green color represents the survey percentages. The light green color, the population percentages. As you can see, the BIPOC communities were close to their population percentages, and the white, the white population is slightly underrepresented. We asked for respondents' zip codes in the survey and grouped them into six geographic areas. Northwest, Southwest-South, North, Northeast, Southeast, and East Portland. The bar graph to the right shows that the geographic distribution of respondents closely matches that of the Portland population. Today, we're excited to share with you the highlights of the findings. We'll focus on the results related to key citywide topics only, but the survey also covered questions that will help bureaus refine their operations. There is much more information in the full report, which you can find online. Now I'll start with the result of the general satisfaction question. The survey asked if residents were satisfied with Portland as a place to live. The darker green colors represent satisfaction, while the lighter green colors dissatisfaction. Overall, slightly under half the residents reported satisfaction, while slightly over one-third were dissatisfied. Looking closer at the geographic disaggregation of the results, Southeast Portland reported the highest level of satisfaction relatively, as indicated by dark green color, while a smaller percentage of East Portlanders reported satisfaction with Portland, as indicated by the lightest green color. On a nicer note, people who identify as transgender and other genders reported more satisfaction with Portland. Then we asked a question, what's the greatest challenge facing Portland? The top three answers were homelessness, cost of living, and community safety. Taking a closer look at the geographic differences in the responses, however, community safety appears to be a bigger concern in East Portland, surpassing cost of living as their second greatest challenge. Cost of living is shown by the yellowish-green bar. Perceptions aren't the same across all racial-ethnic groups either. While homelessness is top, is the top challenge for most groups, cost of living is the biggest concern for American Indian, Alaska natives, Black African-Americans, and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders. Thinking about budget priorities, we also asked, what's the most important service to fund in Portland? Nearly half of the residents chose affordable housing homeless services, and a quarter chose safety services as the most important services to fund, followed by streets, sidewalks, and transportation. Looking deeper into the disaggregated data, the relative importance of services varies across racial-ethnic groups. For example, Black African-Americans valued affordable housing and homeless services much more than other groups, as highlighted here. Residents in different geographic areas also felt differently about the services. East Portlanders viewed safety services as more important compared to the rest of the city. Now I'll pass it to Lillian Nguyen to go over the rest of the results.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
My name is Lillian Gwynn. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm with the City Budget Office. I'm here today to share with you the remainder of the highlighted survey findings. Continuing on with the key survey findings, we asked several questions regarding community safety and policing models. This graph shows Portlanders feelings of safety when walking in their own neighborhood versus in the central city, which we defined as downtown and the inner east side. We asked respondents about their feelings of safety during the day versus at night. Dark green bars recommend, represent agreement with feeling safe, while light green represents disagreement. We saw that three-fourths of Portlanders feel safe in their own neighborhood during the day, but an almost equal percentage of Portlanders feel safe versus unsafe in their own neighborhood at night. Fewer than half of respondents feel safe in the central city during the day, and nearly three-fourths said that they do not feel safe in the central city at night. On this slide, we look at individual geographic areas. The darker the green, the higher the agreement with the statement. I feel safe walking during the day in my neighborhood. As we can see by the lighter green, East Portlanders feel less safe walking during the day in their own neighborhood compared with the rest of the city. We also asked, uh, whether armed police officers should respond to 911 calls about four scenarios. Someone damaging property, someone on private property who won't leave, uh, mental health crisis, someone in mental health crisis, and someone sleeping on the sidewalk. Again, the darker green bars represent agreement, while light green bars represent disagreement. There is more agreement with the first two scenarios, as shown by the darker, the tall dark green bars. Um, and few residents, and fewer residents supported armed police response with mental health crisis and someone sleeping on the sidewalk. Uh, we also asked about which activities armed police should prioritize outside of 911 responses. Respondents rated each activity from high priority to low priority, including an option to indicate that they do not want police to do this activity at all. Again, the darker bars represent a higher priority. Patroling in high-crime locations and following up with a reported crime were seen as the highest priority activities, reflecting the sentiment about community safety as one of the top challenges facing the city. Regarding homelessness, the top challenge identified for Portland, we asked what homelessness solutions would you support building in your own neighborhood? The most supported options were substance abuse and mental health clinics, subsidized apartment complexes, and indoor shelters. In the priority area of economic recovery, we asked residents about their ability to find a job. The pie chart cho, the pie chart shows responses to the statement, "I can find a job in Portland that pays enough to support myself and my family." Forty-eight percent agreed or strongly agreed, and 27% disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statement. With about a third of Portlanders disagreeing, this echoes the finding that the second biggest challenge residents are facing citywide is cost of living. Equity is one of the city's core values, so we wanted to learn more about Portlanders perceptions around access to opportunity. We asked, how much do you agree with the statement that everyone can succeed and thrive in Portland regardless of identity? Roughly half disagreed, while about a third agreed or strongly agreed. To assess Portlanders perception of government effectiveness, we asked if people agreed with the statement, "Portland has an effective government." Roughly a quarter agreed, while half disagreed. And for the last of our highlighted findings, we will cover a question regarding communication with the city. We asked respondents how easy it is to contact the city on issues important to them. One in 10 found it easy, while one-third found it difficult. A third said they didn't know, suggesting that they haven't tried to engage with the city. As we previously mentioned, these are just a few highlights from, from a very rich dataset. You can find a lot more information on our website at www portland.gov/insights. I'll pass it back to Ruth Levine for next steps.
Good, and I know that was a very quick breeze through a lot of data. Um, any questions right now, burning questions about any of those findings? We'll also have a little time at the end for more questions, but-
You're good to go.
Okay, all right. So, next steps. Um, we will briefly walk through a few opportunities that we've identified to utilize this data and improve the city's decision-making and service provision, um, and as well as the next steps in the project overall. So I'm going to talk through a few ways that I think this data could be used as part of the budget process to inform, uh, Mayor and Council's priorities and then also Bureau budget proposals. And these aren't meant to be a policy recommendation, obviously, but, uh, it's intended to be illustrative of how the data could actually flow through the budget process. So the, one of the core elements of the Insight Survey is that it allows you to identify community priorities. Um, these community priorities can be incorporated into your budget priorities as you see appropriate, um, obviously along with other types of input that you have into your priorities. Um, but in this case, for example, you might consider the finding that cost of living is the top challenge identified by Black, African-American, Native American, Pacific Islander Portlanders. If you wanted to develop a budget priority around impacting the cost of living, you could then set a strategic target to request budget proposals that will impact a particular outcome related to cost burden, for example, for example, housing affordability or the like. After that, that would flow into Bureau budget proposals. You could encourage bureaus to develop proposals that align with the outcomes that you've identified. And this, um, you know, would both be a change in kind of how we think about developing budget proposals, and it's also, um, incorporates the asset that, that the community, that the Portland Insight Survey, um, has in terms of the data we have on community priorities. And then another way to utilize this data, I think, is to combine it, um, with other city data and national research in order to conduct more robust policy research. Um, again, this example is around cost of living. Um, and if you wanted to answer a question of how the cost of living impacts or is felt by different communities differently around Portland, and then what are the levers the city could pull to impact that? Um, I just pulled four questions here from the Insight Survey that speak to that. And obviously, there's, there's, uh, findings in the report itself on each of these questions and the cross-sections with the demographic data, but we could do even more analysis, regression analysis and the like on kind of what is, what, what are the most likely variables to impact, um, these questions that were asked in the survey around the greatest challenge, the ability to find a job with sufficient pay. Uh, we asked, which we didn't cover today, but, um, do people feel that they need housing or utility bill assistance? And, um, we also asked a question about whether people had technology challenges in the last year. So all of those are things we could dig into more. We could also combine that with other city data that we have, for example, on utility bills or affordable housing or job training data through Prosper Portland. And then last, you could connect that to national research, um, either through census data or literature on sort of how do different policy levers impact the, um, cost of living for different communities. Um, so this is, again, just an example of something that we could dive into deeper and would really, um, you know, go beyond just kind of delivering this report. So, next slide. So, and then, um, we mentioned that the, the quantitative survey and the qualitative focus groups will happen every other year. So that means, uh, the next step here is the focus groups in the fall of this year, 2023. Um, we are actively developing sort of the questions and the structure for those focus groups, and we'll continue working with your offices, um, for any input on those questions. We're, you know, intend to focus on sort of the top three, uh, challenges that were identified through the survey, community safety, houselessness, and affordable housing, and cost of living, um, and drill deeper into those. Um, and then the next sort of iteration of the quantitative survey will happen next spring in 2024. Um, it'll be a comparable method, um, and most of the questions will remain the same so that we can compare them over time, like things like the general satisfaction questions or does Portland have an effective government, those types of questions. There will be some more, um, program-oriented questions that may change depending on what bureaus are working on or what they would like to see in the survey itself. Um, so there's also opportunity for your offices to help inform, um, some of those adaptive questions in the 2024 survey, um, in the coming months. Um, so yeah, thank you for your time and engagement. Um, we welcome any questions that you have.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation. Commissioner Maps.
Sure. Well, um, thank you for the presentation today, and thank you, uh, for this really rich, um, data source. I would love to dive into a bunch of the data that you got here, but I suspect, given the time and how, uh, rich that discussion is going to be, I feel like we need a different forum, uh, for this, which is one of the things, uh, which is, I think, maybe the main message I have, uh, um, in reaction to today's Portland's Insight, uh, Survey. Um, here, I'll speak directly to my colleagues. I think this is a really important data source. I really like staff's recommendation that we use it to actually guide policy. Um, I also want to point out that, um, actually, a lot of great research has come out of, uh, City Hall and the city in recent months. Uh, so we have the Portland Insight Survey. I remind you that a couple of weeks slash months ago, we had Prosper Portland's, uh, basically Economic Development Plan, which I think is very much in dialogue or could very much be in dialogue with the Portland Insight Survey. Um, the, the Housing Bureau's annual report, uh, which I think in many ways also speaks to, uh, some of the trends that we see in the Portland Insight, uh, Survey. And then I know the Mayor's Office in particular has been interested in the, um, in the burdens that taxes and fees and other charges that citizens have to pay. You know, I, and I, so I, I see basically these four pieces of research, which are quite rich, that, um, I think are in dialogue with each other. I think that it would be great and wise of us to, um, sit down and actually, uh, see what common messages, uh, emerge when we juxtapose these four documents. Um, I'll tell you, when I do that, I see four themes emerge. And I think these, these themes include racial inequality, economic inequality, housing affordability, and also, uh, we're maybe the, a crisis that we face in the commercial real estate side. Um, I, so I think we know what the problems are, and I think that the data that we put together actually suggests some solutions that we could embrace. So, uh, I would love to do that. I, you know, we could do a work session on something like that, and I know there's some thoughts in the building that we might have a work session in this space. Work sessions are great, uh, but I think there might be some richer, um, and more in-depth, um, policy analysis and synthesis that we could do here. And I think that we, that we should do it. And, um, if anyone on this council or on staff is interested in pursuing a synthesis project like that, I would love to, uh, be part of that table and discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, staff, for this really good work.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez. Well, I just want to thank you for this report. Uh, it's, uh, very insightful. Some, in some ways, it reaffirms some things that we saw on the campaign trail, uh, some of our own polling at the time. Uh, there's some strong patterns that, uh, you reiterated, as well as some of the other work that's being done in the city. Um, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. In terms of city funding priorities identified, um, I just re- In terms of city funding priorities identified, just to reiterate the question we had when you walked me through it, the clustering of affordable housing with home services, I do think that's an area that really I'd like to see parsed out. I do think that subsequent slide is quite helpful where you, you know, where it's listed the prioritization in a little bit more detail. It's not to rehash the point, but that, you know, people can be strongly interested in getting people off the streets and whether that's the same answer as affordability challenges. I think sometimes those are two different answers that get clustered together. The other, you know, one of the other takeaways in terms of priorities in city funding or services is that some of the items identified are not the city's responsibility, and this is a quandary at times in how we communicate with the electorate, in how we communicate with voters. We agree that's a priority, but it's not the city's primary responsibility. So I think as we go forward in subsequent years, maybe even in the, you know, the small groups, we see we can dive in on that. Well, you say this, but that's actually a county responsibility or someone else's, and would that recalibrate your own prioritization? I think that, and I think that carries over, obviously, the strategic priorities if voters have identified something they're really interested in, but we don't do it, and might think about how that impacts strategic priorities. In terms of methodology, do we have data in the detail on economic class or income? Because the racial and geographic is very interesting. I continue to be very interested in whether income can be a higher predictor than necessarily race or geography, just on certain questions, or not, or, you know, would...
Yeah.
So I'm curious what we have on that, and, you know, if we've done any analysis on what's more predictive of answers, income, race, or geography.
We do have that. We have questions on income, education, and I agree with you, I think there's a lot more we could do. We have not done the sort of predictive pieces. This report is just the summary data, but some of the additional research I was talking about, for example, you know, there's lots of ways we could look at, you know, what's more predictive through regression analysis of which are some of the variables that are more likely to be predictive of a certain answer. And so it becomes a question of what questions are we interested in looking at in that deeper way?
And, you know, again, I hearken back to some of the polling data we had in the election I went through. There were times that race was less predictive of answers than economics, or where you lived in the city, and it just depended on the topic. And I wouldn't draw too broader conclusions from it, but it was, it's an interesting to have the benefit of that regression analysis. One last sort of question on methodology, again, it came out of the conversations with your team. So the outreach from underrepresented groups, the outreach to them, that was largely outsourced to community groups, correct?
You want to...
In terms of underrepresented in the baseline polling, the randomized polling, the outreach that occurred, do we essentially outsource that responsibility to community groups, or what was the methodology for that?
Thank you for the question. We partnered with nine community-based organizations, in addition to our own neighborhood district associations and the city's affinity groups. So yes, there are largely a community effort to reach out to different communities in Portland.
And would you, from a kind of wearing a statistician's hat, is it fair to say that that isn't necessarily randomized in terms of how that outreach occurs, as opposed to the base survey, which I think, but it sounds like was very much randomized?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll pass that to Dr. Elliott to answer that.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Elliott with the Regional Research Institute, which is part of the School of Social Work at NYU. Just saying. And so the hybrid approach to the methodology is something that really traditionally wasn't done before, because there was such skepticism around bias that the non-random approach, the non-probability sampling can do. But more recent research has suggested that if you are able to do a random sample, a probability-based sample, and you also can use the opt-in or the non-probability sampling approach to access the commonly underrepresented folks in surveys, we know there are some groups that just don't respond to surveys, that if you do that, you can't combine those two as long as you're able to apply statistical weighting to the sample before you do the analysis, which we did.
What's the 15-second version of how you do that weighting?
The weighting?
Yeah.
Sure. 15 seconds, I don't know. But, so basically, what you do is you compare the proportions in the survey sample to the proportions in the population. And based on those different percentages, you calculate the adjustment necessary to either increase the influence of a group that is underrepresented, or decrease the influence of a group that's overrepresented, to get them adjusted to the proportion seen in the population. And actually, to be honest, with the hybrid approach with this survey, this is the very first time, and I've done hundreds of surveys, locally, nationally, regionally, statewide, that we have had to increase the influence of the white population and decrease the representation of the communities of color, because we had such a great response from those communities of color due to this outreach, which basically what weighting does, sorry, I'm way past 15 seconds. But what this weighting does is if you have a larger proportion of a population, you're condensing, you're, it's kind of like if you're putting a stronger concentration of a flavoring in a juice or something. You're able to say, we're just combining those folks and concentrating their responses to meet the proportion of the population versus having to spread them out. We all know that some surveys have had, like, I mean, there's been news stories about two people representing a whole community of color. But this way, we were able to actually really get a great response from the communities of color, so that we're highly confident that what we have learned is generalizable to the Portland population.
Super helpful. One last question on that. So the, on the non-randomized, the communities of color, what are the guards against selection bias? And non-randomized, it's just we have different challenges there, some...
Right, right. Normally, and what we use the opt-in approach for is what we commonly do to oversample when we do a random household survey. And what you do is you include more of a certain subgroup in order to get the representation you need from the population. And so that's commonly done. We just did it in a different way, because we know that people don't respond to surveys, and that having people from within the community increases their willingness and trust to participate. And so what we did is we got a wide variety of community partners. So it's not just one organization that reached out to one community. So we've got a representation across subgroups. We've got multiple modalities. So people reached out in person, they reached out both at their agencies or throughout the community, they also dispersed the survey invite through social media. So there's a wider range of how the recruitment was done across multiple sources to reduce that selection bias that could happen.
Got it. Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. So just following up on that question, too, when I had the presentation to my office, I learned, or I thought I learned, that there was an underrepresentation of the Latine community in that data when we looked at the disaggregation. Yeah, so it was over, so did it, was it trued up in that balancing way that you said?
In the weighting process, that was adjusted.
Okay, okay.
But we still, I mean, the thing is that it was a smaller proportion, but we also had a larger quantity. So because we had over 5,200 responses, we were able to get, even a 5% group is a large number of people, versus if we only had 100 responses, that would be a very small group. So even though the proportion was a little off, we were still using a lot of individuals' responses to be able to make that weighting adjustment.
Okay. The second question I have is, you talked about changes from 2019 that you made. Can you talk about what changes they were, and why you made those changes? And then are there any changes, having gone through this process, that you would make next time?
Sure, I'll start with that. So there are several changes. First, we updated the questions. So 2019 pilot survey was done, you know, as a pilot within a short period of time with a small budget. So with PSU's help, we were able to go back to the drawing board. It was an eight, nine-month-long process to work with all the bureaus in the city, all the council offices, and include community advisors in the process to help us develop the questions. So they are relevant to the city, they are understood by community members who don't understand, like, city lingo, right? And that the questions are relevant to them. So that's the first change. And then, second, the biggest change was the methodology. So in 2019, it was opt-in only and primarily online. So there was no randomized sampling at all done in 2019. And so in 2022, with our expert help from PSU, like, we were able to do a new approach, combined approach, to make sure that it's scientifically valid and statistically sound. And then, third, one thing we did also improve on was a lot of significance testing done by Debbie's group, to make sure that anything we presented, anything that's in the report, are statistically significant, not just like, oh, I see this bar slightly lower than that bar, so maybe they're different when they're in fact not. What else? I think those are the biggest changes that we made in 2022.
Anything moving forward that you think you would do differently?
Yeah, I think we'll increase our outreach even more next year. We got really good representation this year, but as you see on the graph, some groups, the response rates were slightly lower. For example, the Latine group is, I believe, 1% or 2% lower, which is not a big difference, but we still would like to reach out to them more. So we'll work with the different groups, community partners this year, expand on that. And also, some questions are going to change. As Ruth mentioned, majority of the survey questions are evergreen, so they're not going to change year to year, so that we can have longitudinal data to see trends over time. And the small proportion of the bureau-specific questions are going to be adaptive, meaning that they're going to be salient to the time we're in. Like, if a bureau is done with their programming with that particular question, then we can swap it out with something that another bureau may need more urgently. I think those are the biggest changes we're planning on doing in the focus group, which is new.
Yeah, that was a change also. Just two quick things to add. I mean, I think in terms of the questions, I think it'll be worth thinking about anything around the charter transition, change in the form of government, obviously going into 2024, that will be a sort of right time to inform, I imagine, some questions. So that will be something where I imagine we might want to focus some of the more specific questions in terms of programmatic changes. And then I think, to Ning's point, I think we also want to look at the, and I think we talked to you a little bit about this in our briefing, but about, at the language and race overlap, and just kind of make sure we're getting, when you cross those two things, that within the racial and ethnic groups, that you're getting representation from English and non-English-speaking populations within those groups.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maps.
Quick, I know we're going long here, so I'll try to keep it short. First, I appreciate the discussion on methods, and I think I learned a lot through that. As we were doing that, I was looking at the appendix C, which are your significant tests, looking at these results, which I don't entirely understand, but I think I basically get what's going on here. It seems like we are struggling to get statistically valid samples from the disability community. I don't know if I'm reading that correctly, but if I am reading that correctly, as we think about the next iteration of that, I hope that we can embrace new methods that will give us some more leverage here. I'll also say that, in general, in the city, I think this is a space where we really struggle to, this is a community we struggle to serve, let's put it that way. And I'd like to very quickly revisit a couple of pieces of data. Did you, I believe you had a slide on why people are leaving Portland, is that correct, in this presentation? I'm having a hard time remembering what was in the report and what was in the presentation. But if we have the why people are leaving Portland slide, can we throw it up real quick? So things that really pop are housing affordability, living closer to friends and family, jobs, better school district, public safety. Did the cost of parking come up?
The what? Parking?
No? Okay, I was just curious about that. And can we take a look at the slide? I think you have a slide on funding priorities for the city.
Cost of parking?
I think it was a bar chart, if I recall. Can I go back to, well, this one works, too. Doesn't matter. Well, let's go back to the, we can do the pie chart, that's fine. So pretty consistently in the slide, that the next slide shows this data, I think, broken down probably by some demographic groups. Consistently, we see affordable housing, public safety, and transportation being a top priority. And I just want to, I think everyone on council hears all day, every day about the houselessness piece, and that's important, that's obviously a big problem. Public safety, obviously a big problem. But I just want to point out to my colleagues and people watching at home that Portlanders consistently put transportation needs in their top three concerns in terms of what the city should fund. And actually, here, why don't we just roll it over forward? I think the next slide maybe breaks this down by demographics. And if we were to take a look at this in terms of demographics, too, you see that that, although it's not universally true, you'll see that even when you break this down by race, transportation still consistently comes up towards the top, especially as you look at communities of color. So, and certainly, these findings inform my approach to budgeting and policymaking moving forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will hand it back to you.
Very good. I have, first of all, I just want to thank you again. I obviously had an opportunity to see this presentation in advance, and I thanked you then privately. I want to thank you again publicly. And colleagues, a reminder, this is a work in progress. The reason the mayor's office and the budget office took this survey up was because the previous auditor decided not to continue surveys, and it was felt to be very important for our budgeting process to be able to identify where the public was and what the highest needs were from the perspective of the public. This is an evolving process, and so I really appreciate the comments that we've heard today, and I would encourage us to continue to work with our research team, our leadership team on this, and if there are refinements to be made, they're very open to it. And as was mentioned, this year, based on last year's input, we've added the focus groups, which I think is going to be really interesting, because then we can ask some follow-up questions and get some deeper perceptions. My takeaway from this, frankly, is that it, and I appreciated much of the dialogue, or at least the parts I understood, on methodology. I am not a statistician, although I do know where the word "generalizable" comes from now. Thank you for putting that into my talking points.
You're welcome.
You said it flawlessly, and I'll be working on it for the rest of the week, but thank you for that. This validates, from my perspective, that the council has been prioritizing the right things in our budget process. And, you know, the issues of homelessness, livability, the affordability issues, indirectly, we heard a lot about some of the livability issues. All of these things are front and center, and this council has prioritized those areas. So there was nothing here that suggested at a large, you know, big-picture level that we're on the wrong track in terms of what our priorities are. There is something I want you to think about for next year, and I'm not really sure how to work this in, but I don't want to set unrealistic expectations about what the city can deliver through a survey. A survey both gives us information, but it also signals to the public as they hear the questions or read the questions about what they think the city should be doing. as they hear the questions or read the questions about what they think the city should be doing. And when it comes to the questions of budget around housing affordability, the reality is, in the scheme of things, we don't do that much in that particular space. And it's not because we're dodging responsibility or saying somebody else is responsible. It really gets down to who has the streams of funding to be able to do something at scale that makes a difference from an outcomes perspective. Where we make the big difference around housing affordability, in my mind, is around policy. And often, policy development requires very little budget support. I actually, as I look back on the last 10 years, I think the biggest things that this council has done around housing affordability is the Central City 2035 Plan, which changed our zoning codes to increase density and height, the Better Housing by Design project, and the Residential Infill Project. All fairly weighty, boring policy discussions, but they actually will have a significant impact in terms of what we're able to do around housing affordability in the city of Portland. Of course, we did the housing bond. Of course, during COVID, when we had ARPA dollars and CARES funding, we supported rent support and worked with our colleagues at the county on various programs. But I don't necessarily want to set us up as being the leaders on something where really we're playing a support role or an ancillary role. I think I'll just leave it at that, except to say I appreciate it, and I think I'll look forward to the focus groups and what we hear there. There is one question, by the way, that, not of me to you, but just a question that's asked. And I already know the answer to the question. When somebody says, "Do you think local government is effective?", it's a throwaway question. It tells us nothing. At a time when we're routinely excoriated for stupidity, incompetence, a lack of results locally, nationally, globally, and frankly, local government is under attack nationally in the United States, that's part of a current political trend, and when people don't really know what's the responsibility of local government versus county government, versus metro government, versus state government, versus federal government, when they see bad results at the street level around homelessness, around livability, public safety, education, affordability, anything, they're going to obviously say that their local government isn't effective. I was actually surprised that 25% thought we were effective, including many who thought we were highly effective. I wouldn't have answered the survey that way, and I'm a key leader in it. Because it's about results. And so I would encourage us to maybe think, how do we refine that question to be maybe more indicative of how people feel about certain services versus expectation levels that they have? Could we somehow disaggregate it or break it down or make that more useful? It's not useful for me to go home and know that I'm hated as the mayor of Portland. I've known that for years. That's not helpful. What people want is results. They want better outcomes. And so the question is, how do we refine this survey so that we are getting to the better outcomes by making the specific decisions that will lead to those better outcomes? That would be really helpful. And I don't have the answer, but I'm just saying, maybe that's something we could think on over the course of the next six to eight months before we relaunch.
I can add one thing to that, because that question by its, it was not by itself. We asked--
No, I understand. It was aggregated strategy.
But we got thousands of responses to that open-ended question. And I think looking through the narrative of all of those responses might kind of lead into some ideas about how to tease that apart for next time.
Good. That's really helpful, and I appreciate it. Good work, thank you. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, public testimony, do we have any?
No one signed up.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Commissioner Maps moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Gonzalez, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Deeply, deeply appreciative of this work, leadership of the mayor's office, the budgeting office, important inputs into our dialogues going forward. The results echo findings of other recent citywide polling in some respects, although in a deeper way, the focus on crime, homelessness, and cost of living. Some of the trends in East Portland were not shocking to me at all, but it's helpful to see with the texture and the depth that you've dug in. You know, I'll continue to have questions about what's been randomized and non-randomized. At some point, maybe you'd like to see that data sets sort of separate. What does the randomized data tell us? And is that different than what's been presented in any material way? Recognizing there are some challenges with that with unrepresented groups, but still would like, you know, would appreciate that going forward. And then I think just continued dialogue about methodology, well, is valuable. But bottom line, I'm voting to accept the report and appreciate all your hard work on it. Thank you.
Maps.
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor's office for their leadership in making this report happen. I also want to thank all the folks who actually did the work. I find this information to be extremely helpful as a policymaker, and I will use this as an opportunity to reiterate my call for my colleagues and people who work in policymaking positions to use this report and some of the quantitative data that I think we've gotten out of Prosper and whatnot to really begin to hone our policies and spending patterns to address the needs of Portlanders. With that said, I am glad to vote aye.
Rivia.
I just want to thank the team for all of your great work. It's clearly a lot of work and very thoughtfully done.
We're going to have to suspend the vote.
Okay.
We lost our quorum. We'll take a two-minute recess.
Okay. Sorry about that.
A candidate for our open citizen trustee position on the FPDR Board of Trustees. As a little bit of background on the board, per the city charter, the FPDR plan is administered by a Board of Trustees who supervise and control the FPDR fund. The board comprises of five members, the mayor or the mayor's designee, who serves as the board chair, an elected firefighter, an elected police officer, two citizen trustees. The citizen trustees shall be citizens of the city of Portland and have relevant experience in disability or pension manners, and they are nominated by the mayor and approved by the city council. Normally, the trustees serve a three-year term. The board presently has one vacant trustee position. So today, we are here asking that the council approve Tom Kramer's as citizen trustee to serve through the end of the vacant term, which ends on December 31, 2023, and approve for the following three-year term, January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2006, or 2026, not '06. So real quick comments about Tom. Tom came to us through some recommendation, actually, from our Board of Trustees. And Tom has 40 years of experience working as an employee benefits attorney with a primary focus on retirement, disability, and health plans. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to introduce himself and give you some background on him.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Sam. Good morning, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for considering my, the possibility of my nomination as a member of the FPDR Board of Trustees. I've dealt with the FPDR fund over the last 30 years in various capacities, not as a representative, but just as a lawyer with business before them. I find what they deal with and how they deal with it very interesting. The transition on the board has been interesting, and the transition of the fund itself has been interesting. And I would be pleased to serve if the mayor would appoint me and the council would approve.
Very good. Shortened to the point. Colleagues, any questions? Any public testimony on this report?
We have one person signed up, Kevin Matches.
Good morning. And if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Kevin Matches. There should be a PowerPoint. Thank you.
It's coming up right now. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's just a little slow. Okay, it's a lot slow. There it is.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Matches. I have no objection to Mr. Kramer's appointment, and I'm not here to comment on his experience, but rather on the importance of filling vacant FPDR board seats with trustees who will support a culture of transparency. After the seat is filled, the mayor's designee will remain vacant for now. Next slide. I recommended that the city request an analysis of a comprehensive actuarial funding policy. The last time the city obtained this analysis was 18 years ago. I'd like to elaborate on transparency, an important benefit of such a policy. Next slide. The pension's normal cost is around $50 million to $100 million per year. Normal cost is the annual actuarial cost of pension benefits earned by active members while working. Next slide. There is also interest cost, similar to interest on a loan. Take the unfunded liability, how much is owed, then multiply it by the annual interest rate. Similar to a loan, the interest is, the interest cost is compounding over time. Continuing the analogy, it's like you're relying on your credit card debt one year to take a vacation to Paris, and the next year to Italy, and on and on every single year. Put the normal cost and the interest cost together, and you already exceeded $200 million per year. Next slide. So how will the city pay off its liability? Under the Portland Pay-as-you-go approach, contributions from property taxes are only sufficient to cover benefit payments to members as they come due in retirement. So the interest costs and normal costs together now, are now in black. Compare that to the contributions in green. The difference is negative amortization. Zero amortization would indicate that we're treading water and things are not getting worse. Positive amortization would indicate that we're paying down the unfunded liability, and things are getting better. Next slide. In summary, passing off costs to future generations of Portland taxpayers hinders transparency. Consequently, the board and the city's efforts to support transparency are even more important. According to staff at the January 23 board meeting, when obtaining an analysis of funding policy came up, quote, "The mechanism for changing the charter is council can refer a charter change, or there can be a citizen petition to change the charter, and council is not going to have much interest in this," end quote. So my question to council is, are you interested in transparency?
Could I ask you a couple of follow-up questions? So, and you probably have forgotten more than I ever knew about this, and I appreciate you coming in, and I appreciate your interest in transparency. My understanding is, you know, the pay-as-you-go system was put in place, obviously, decades ago. But it's my understanding that the movement has been for us to move people off the pay-as-you-go system onto PERS. Is that correct?
That's right. So after that analysis was completed that I was alluding to, there was a charter change. And so the city-run pension plan was closed to new hires. And those new hires now go into organ PERS, just like any, you know, parks, water, employee, you know, you name it.
So, and I'm oversimplifying this, and I completely acknowledge that. But the current retirees and their beneficiaries will die off. And we have amortized, and I agree with you on the point you made about amortizing the cost. So there is a cost to future generations of liabilities already incurred. In fact, we're, you and I are paying taxes now to pay off pensions for people long gone. But ultimately, what happens is that liability will go down, will it not?
It will start going down, you know, basically around the time that nearly everyone has retired under the old system. So as of right now, the, under current assumptions, the liability would grow by that negative amortization amount of $50 to $70 million per year.
Right. And in fact, it'll continue beyond that. Because as you correctly pointed out, we're not, you know, we're not paying down the whole debt. We're amortizing it, meaning, you know, it's carried over a longer period of time. The reasoning, I believe, behind that, and the reasoning it was set up with that way, was to keep the property tax and the contributions to the public at large minimal year over year. Is that your understanding? Or do I have that wrong?
I mean, you know, why they did it, I can't speak to that. That happened in, I think, the 1940s.
Yeah, it was a while, though, long before you and I got here.
Yeah, I mean, I've done public records requests to look into this issue, but I have not quite gone back to the 40s. But yeah, that is currently, the effect now is that the annual property tax is lower, but consequently, the long-term property taxes are going to be much higher. For example, over, you know, say, a 20-year period, it does increase property taxes relative to, an example, alternative funding policy.
And just with regard to transparency, are there specific recommendations that you would have for Mr. Kramer or his colleagues or future appointees to this board? Are there specific types of transparency you would like to see?
Yeah, I think there are two more immediate steps that could be taken. First would be to request this analysis that I mentioned of potential cost savings. And the second would be to engage with independent national experts who have written about this issue and can only engage by invitation.
Okay. That's helpful. And you've now given the director and at least one member of the board the presentation, and I appreciate your public testimony, and I appreciate your responding to my questions. Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have public, further public testimony? Or is it just one--
That concludes testimony.
Very good. I will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moves.
Commissioner Maps moves.
Second.
Commissioner Gonzalez, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
The Bureau of Fire and Police Disability and Retirement works to support our firefighters and police officers in navigating the retirement and disability process. We owe it to our first responders to provide them with efficient, effective, and expedient services. Tom Kramer comes to the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Board of Trustees with over 40 years of experience in employee benefits law throughout Portland. He's worked with employees on health, retirement, and disability health plans to ensure that they are operating in a cost-effective and efficient manner. When Tom first came across the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund over 30 years ago, he recognized its layers of complexity. As the city changes, the bureau is adopting accordingly. Tom's experience comes at a valuable time at the bureau, is beginning to execute his five-year plan. The plan integrates the past and present of the bureau to build a better future for the personnel it supports. When we dedicate time to supporting first responders throughout the disability claims process, retirement, and their careers, we increase their satisfaction. We protect their families. And when our first responders feel supported, they are better able to continue doing the work we all value and count on. I'm confident that Tom's vast experience in finance and legal matters will help the board navigate complex issues in pursuit of the, both the bureau's and the plan's goals, and I'm grateful for the service of the board, trustees, and our newest appointee. Your dedication to supporting the first responders of Portland is truly inspiring. And one last short story, just learned of one of our longtime firefighters that was recently diagnosed with a second form of cancer. It is devastating news that in, that you all are there to help them navigate life-changing events and, and deal with retirement. So again, I just want to reiterate an appreciation for what you do. With that, I vote to approve the report.
Maps.
I want to thank Mr. Kramer for volunteering to serve on this important committee. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I also want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I think this board will be greatly served by your experience and your wisdom, and just really appreciate your service. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for stepping forward. This is obviously a highly technical exercise. It's a very important one to our employees and to the public at large, as you just heard, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to dedicate your time and energy to what we think is an important purpose. Sam, thank you for your continued diligent and great leadership of the board, and I also want to thank all the members of the board who currently serve. Thank you. I vote aye, and the report is accepted. Thank you. Next item, 651, please, an emergency ordinance.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement with Multlima County to accept grant funding for emergency shelter expansion for $6,621,827.
Colleagues, this grant agreement with Multlima County facilitates the transfer of state funds through Governor Kotek's Oregon All-In Executive Order Plan. The $6.8 million in funding will pay for the capital and six months of operational costs for the Clinton Triangle Temporary Alternative Shelter Site. That funding passes to the Multlima County Multi-Agency Coordination Group, often called the MAC-G, MAC-G, and to the city of Portland, the entity building and operating the shelter site, of course. This allows the city to expand low-barrier alternative shelter capacity, provide critical support services, and help unhoused Portlanders rapidly move back into stable housing. I want to thank the governor for her support of the Clinton Triangle Temporary Alternative Shelter Site. Her partnership and funding has allowed for the purchase of sleeping pod units, as well as operations of these essential services. I also want to thank the state legislature for approving the governor's budget that included ongoing operational funding for this specific site for the biennium. This low-barrier model is a critical component of the shelter continuum, and we've received multiple requests from Portland partners and provided, providers to be able to refer people into the sites. The Clinton Triangle site opened last week. We already have more than 40 individuals living at the site, with more coming in every day, and as I said, more partners and providers asking to refer people into the site. The full site will be constructed and fully opened within the next month. I continue to be committed to addressing the needs of those living unsheltered in our community and those impacted throughout Portland. I will continue working to increase available shelter beds, and will keep working with our partners at the county, metro, and the state to continue identifying funding opportunities for this planned expansion. I have Sarah Morrissey and Skylar Brockernapp from my office here to answer any questions. Sarah, what, if you want to come up, if there are, do we have any questions on this? Maybe you don't have to come up. Okay?
I had one for both of you.
Come on up, Sarah.
This quick one.
Oh, and Skylar is online. I'm sorry, Skylar, I didn't see you there.
So mechanically, these don't flow through the Joint Office on Homelessness, correct? So this is, could you just give, I think the mayor sort of did it, but just give us a 20-second reminder of the structure?
So these dollars flow from the state and then go to the county, and then through the county, it'll go directly to us, and we'll get the full lump once this IGA is executed.
Got it. And the, the County Multi-Agency Coordinating Group, do we ever want to consolidate that in the Joint Office on Homelessness? I mean, is it just a totally separate body? I don't mean to poke a bear, I'm just sort of curious as we...
So that group was established through the governor's emergency declaration, which is Oregon All-In, so the counties that received funding, they were directed to stand up a multi-agency coordination group. And so this is the counties, the county runs it, but we sit on it, as well as other nonprofits and other entities, as well as members from the state.
Got it. I think I'm good.
Great. And Skylar, since you took the time to be online, can you just give us one minute on how things are going with our first task site?
Yeah, going really well. So I just got off the phone with our incident commander, project manager, this morning. We just had 32 more pods that were delivered as of this morning, and so by tomorrow, should have those 48 additional pods, in addition to that 69, those 69 pods that were already on-site. So moving right along there, we already have over 40 individuals on-site, and we actually have quite a few folks who are really trying to get into the site, which is great, but we're trying to streamline that referral process and just make that really clear, so folks aren't being dropped off kind of at the site, or are trying to kind of go through, like, around our referral process, basically, to transition projects or other groups in the area.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate your hard work. Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Vote aye.
Maps.
I just want to congratulate the mayor's office and everyone else who worked so hard to make this happen, but this is extremely impressive. I'm glad to vote aye on this important step forward.
Rubio.
I want to thank the mayor for your vision on this plan, and that you've had that vision, and you're making it happen in, in a way that is exactly what it was intended to do. I also really appreciate the great work of his team, especially Skylar and Sarah. Thank you for all you're doing. Excellent, excellent work. Also grateful for the governor's support for this project, and also for the county's partnership. This is a great start, and I know there's much more to do and to be done, but very much looking forward to keeping the work moving forward. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everybody. 652, please, this is a report.
Accept bid of Moore Excavation Inc. for $7,781,534 for the 82nd Avenue Omnibus Project.
So this is a transportation project as part of the Portland Bureau of Transportation's 82nd Avenue Omnibus Project. This item authorizes critical maintenance and safety improvements along 82nd Avenue, including the construction of new signalized pedestrian crossings, reconstruction of the ADA ramps, and better illumination along the corridor. Commissioner Maps, before I turn this over to Bico, do you have anything else you want to say on this? Is the commissioner in charge?
No, I just want to thank your office and Bico for helping make this project a reality. I'll tell you, one of the most notable things about 2023, at least for me, has been the dramatic increase in traffic fatalities out there on our streets. This is an important step forward. I'll also remind you that the city just took over 82nd Avenue, I believe, a little bit less than a year ago, maybe it's been a year. So this is kind of lightning speed in terms of taking over, frankly, an orphaned state highway, and the city is very much engaged in making it safer right away. We couldn't have gotten here today without the good work of the Span in front of us.
Well, let's hear from him, a man who needs no introduction, Director Bico Taylor. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Also, to the members of the city council, good morning. For the record, I'm Bico Taylor, the city's chief procurement officer. There were multiple ordinances passed previously by city council to approve the work. On November 16, 2022, ordinances 191069 and 191076 were approved by council, and on December 14, 2022, ordinances 191112 and 191113 were also approved. The original engineering estimate was 7.213 million, and the confidence level for that pricing was high. I would like to make a comment here, that the first low bidder was Brown Contracting, and I'm going on the record to say that Brown did not meet the city's aspirational goal and failed to meet the city's subcontract equity program requirements. On March 7, 2023, procurement published an invitation to bid with a due date of April 27, 2023, and total procurement received three bids, including Brown Contracting. We received a bid from Moore Excavating, who was the low bidder and is the recommended awardee. Their proposal totals 7.781 million, which is roughly 8% over the engineering estimate. The city's standard aspirational goals of 20% apply to this solicitation, and a following is the breakdown of the utilization that Moore Excavated submitted. So they will perform 39% of the project. 20% of the project will be performed by co-bid certified contractors, and in that, in that 12% will be performed by Hispanic-owned companies on the contract. Moore Excavation is located in Fairview, Oregon, and it's not a state co-bid certified contract. However, they do have a current city of Portland business tax registration and are in full compliance with all of the city's contracting requirements. If there are any questions, my colleague from P-Bot, Nicole Pierce, should be attendance on the call, should be in attendance online. If not, I recommend that the council accept this report and authorize execution of the contract immediately.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, any questions? Do we have testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
All right, this is a report. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Commissioner Maps moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Gonzalez, second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
I vote to accept.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Well done. I vote aye. Report's accepted. Project's approved. Thank you. 653, please, this is an emergency ordinance.
Pay settlement of Jordan Ward and Caitlin Hemphill property damage lawsuit for $60,000 involving the Bureau of Environmental Services and the Portland Bureau of Transportation.
Colleagues, I would like to refer this item back to my office. 654, please.
Men contract with OTAC Inc. for professional engineering services for the Spring Water Wetlands Enhancement Project E07383, not to exceed $205,928.
Thank you. This is a non-emergency ordinance. Commissioner Maps.
Mr. Mayor, could we read 654 and 655 together? No, totally fine.
655, please.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and provide payment for construction of the Spring Water Wetlands Restoration Project E07383 for an estimated cost of $6,028,000.
Also, non-emergency ordinance. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, you might remember that last week, this council authorized environmental services to apply for a federal FEMA grant that would bring needed dollars to our city and pay for 90% of the Spring Water Wetlands Restoration Project. Now, this week, today, environmental services is bringing another aspect of this project to council. The two ordinances we're considering right now will authorize environmental services to spend $6.2 million to amend the project design with OTAC, and will allow environmental services to solicit competitive bids for project construction. Now, you might remember, this project is important because Johnson Creek has flooded more than 40 times over the last 75 years. Those floods have damaged roads, homes, businesses, and threatened lives. The project before us today will provide much-needed relief from the threat of flooding for 150 homes and businesses in the historically underserved Lince and Powellhurst Gilbert neighborhoods. This project will also improve water quality and habitat along Johnson Creek, and here today, we have several staff members who will tell us more about this ordinance, including Marielle Geza Toeval, Division Manager with Environmental Services. I believe we also have Tracy Word, a project manager with BES, and we might have Roger Geller, the Bike Coordinator with P-Bot. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to staff now. We can't hear you.
I see Tressies in Zoom, but they're not unmuted.
If I have staff in the room, maybe we can make a phone call?
Commissioner Maps, my apologies. I believe that they're on their way in person.
Okay.
They should be there shortly.
All right, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's put this on hold for a moment, and let's go to the next item, please. 656.
Accept a grant.
Are they, or is it the same people who are going to present?
Let me see, let's see, 656 is, no, this should be water.
Okay.
I have my, yeah, I think we're good on water.
I'm sorry? Oh, did I skip one? No, we're...
Commissioner Rubio stepped away.
Oh, I need, I only need a quorum, though. I need four to vote, right? You know what? Let's just take a five-minute recess. Let's make this easier. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for the scheduling problems. So, the presentation today, the ordinances relate to the Spring Water Flood, Flooding Restoration Project. And we've been in front of council two weeks ago to discuss about this project. Two weeks ago was to request additional funding, grant money from FEMA.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, we're still paused. The mayor will start the meeting shortly.
Thank you. You let me know when it starts.
Yes.
To 654 and 655, non-emergency ordinances.
Recording in progress.
We're back at 654 and 655. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I already provided some introductory comments on these two items, and I'll just turn it over to staff now.
Thanks.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Maps. So, for the record, my name is Marielle Geisa-Toeval. I work for BES in the project management office. And we're here today to talk about the Spring Water Wetlands and Flood Plain Restoration Projects with two related ordinances. We were in front of council two weeks ago to ask for additional grant money for this project. And so some of the slides might be similar from the background, but we have these two new ordinances today. Tressy Ward is a project manager, so she will walk you through the slides. Thank you.
Hi there. Again, yes, I'm Tressy Ward with she/her pronouns and a project manager with Environmental Services. Next slide, please. So, just to summarize quickly, this presentation's going to talk about the Spring Water Wetlands Project requirements, objectives, overview, budget, and schedule. Next, please. So, the Spring Water Wetlands Project, a lot of the issue, the issues that require the project are that it, flooding is a major issue in the Lenz and Powellhurst Gilbert neighborhoods. As Commissioner Maps mentioned, it's flooded over 40 times in the last 75 years, with some of the largest events occurring in 1986, 2009, and 2015. Also, non-nat, or contaminated non-native fill has been placed within the project area, kind of in the northern area of the site. There's limited access to nature and nearby centers in this kind of 60-acre natural area that the city owns, and some invasive plants are largely rehinaric grass dominate the systems in the wetlands. Next slide, please. So, many city plans and policies focus on reducing flooding and connecting neighborhoods. The Johnson Creek Restoration Plan focuses on restoring natural watershed functions that naturally resolve flooding. And they, it also improves water quality and supports wildlife. The city's Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is focused on reducing flooding and specifically prioritizes this project, the Spring Water Restoration Project. And we, as Marielle mentioned, are working on a federal emergency management agency grant for $7.1 million that was approved by council last week. And in 2018, the Lenz Collaborative Declaration of Cooperation was a very wide, agency-wide agreement that FEMA and also state agents, agencies like the Department of Emergency Management, Environmental Quality, Transportation, State Lands, and Portland Bureau of Development Services, the Bureau of Environmental Management, Environmental Services, and many others agreed to focus on reducing flood risk and improving ecological health in these, in these neighborhoods specifically. The city also focuses on the need for connecting neighborhoods like in pedestrian connections and many city plans. Next slide, please. So, in terms of project objectives, we're really focused on reduce, relieving local flooding and flood risk for this project and also enhancing habitat, water quality and watershed health, and improving access to the community center and nature centers. Next slide. So, in terms of a project overview, here's a map of the site. The project's located just north of Foster Road, and the Spring Water Corridor Trail goes through it. And it is in between Southeast 111th and 122nd. It also builds on the Foster Flood Plain natural area that you can kind of see there to the south. It has been effectively reducing flooding for many years. And this will just continue that effort to reduce flooding in these, these flood-prone neighborhoods. It also expands and enhances about 30 acres of wetlands. And it connects, the purple line there shows a connection between Spring Water Corridor Trail and Southeast 115th and 117th. Next slide. So, the Lenz and Powellhurst Gilbert neighborhoods are historically underserved and ethnically diverse neighborhoods. And the outreach that we're, we're really focused on is, is communicating about flood map changes. And outreach is provided in multiple languages. Next slide. So, this figure shows, I know it's a little hard to read, but it, it shows the modeling for very large flood event. So, the events that I mentioned earlier, 96, 2009, and 2015, that's about the size of it that this is showing. And the orange area that you see there is what, what would flood now in that type of a flood event, a very large event. And then post-project, that would no longer flood. So, all of that water would be contained largely on city property. And those blue areas are the project boundaries, largely the project boundaries of the Foster Flood Plain natural area and the Spring Water Project. So, we're really focused on trying to contain that floodwater on city property. And it removes flooding from around 150 properties. Also, flooding's occurring more frequently now due to climate change. And the projects expand wetlands and are improving water quality. So, next slide. So, we've already mentioned the grant a few times, but just for context, I kept it in here that it's a $7.1 million grant that we're approved to receive if awarded. And the focus of, of the two ordinances today are, number one, for construction, to receive authorization for a competitive bid for around $6 million to build the project, to restore the 30 acres of wetlands, dispose of fill about 12,000 cubic yards to add the trail. And it also includes some educational areas to comply with our permits. And the other element, and if there are any questions, I could pause here.
Colleagues, any questions at this point? Nope, go ahead.
Okay. The other one is to amend our design contract about $200,000. And that would yield a total of about $1.4 million for the, for the design overall. And we're, have about a 25% small business inclusion in this project. And the reasons that we're, we're asking to amend the project are to add a new low-lying property into the project areas, and that really helps maximize our flood benefits. And it takes, it reduces the flood extents significantly to extend permit support, add community outreach for the flood map changes, and also incorporate cost escalation that occurred over the pandemic. So... Next slide, please. So, what we're looking at in terms of schedule is we're hoping to advertise this project this month, if possible. And the FEMA grant decision is anticipated in January 2024. And then we're hoping to start construction this coming spring. So... Next slide. And that's it.
All right, very good. Do we have public testimony on these items?
No one signed up.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions on either 654 or 655? All right, 654 is a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. 655 is also a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
You bet. And we had already read 656 into the record, have we? I can't remember.
I don't think we did.
Why don't we just start?
Yeah.
656, please. This is an emergency ordinance.
Accepted grant in the amount of $2,393,927 from the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorized intergovernmental agreement for Southeast Division Street, 148th Avenue to 174th Avenue Project.
Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from P-Bot. This ordinance authorizes P-Bot to accept a grant from the state of Oregon to complete the Outer Division Safety Project. This construction grant will enable the city to make safety improvements along Division from Southeast 152nd to Southeast 160th and from Southeast 166th, that's 166th, to Southeast 177th. Here is why this ordinance is important. In the last 12 years, there have been eight traffic fatalities on Division in this project area. And in the last 12 years, these blocks have seen about 17 traffic crashes, which have resulted in injury. Now, this grant from the state is restricted to creating safer roads through the construction of infrastructure, like medians and ADA ramps. If this council chooses not to accept the state grant, these grant dollars will go to another jurisdiction. In other words, the city of Portland does not have the option to redirect these funds to another project. I also want to recognize that this project comes with some controversy and some tension. Of course, this council has heard from residents and businesses along the Division Corridor who are frustrated with some of the safety improvements we have made along that street. So, it is unsurprising that some stakeholders along Division are also skeptical of the ordinance before us today. I'm here today to argue that if we work together, we can both make these streets safer, while at the same time being responsive to residents and businesses who use these roads, these crosswalks, these sidewalks, and these bus stops. We can do that by listening and working with the businesses and residents and commuters in this neighborhood. As, I will also want to let everyone on this council and everyone who is watching at home know that as P-Bot Commissioner, I am committed to doing the listening and doing the work needed to bring safer streets, safer sidewalks, and safer bus stops to East Portland. That's why I've personally met with the businesses and residents who live along this stretch of Division, where this new safety infrastructure has been installed. I have heard their concerns, and I have directed P-Bot to be especially responsive as we go about designing this project. And I also want to reassure folks, should this project move forward, my office and P-Bot will continue to listen to and collaborate with the people who live, work, and commute along this stretch of Division. And now here to tell us more about this ordinance, we have staff from P-Bot. I'll turn the floor over to them now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps, for the introduction. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler. Commissioners. For the record, my name is Elizabeth Tilström, Capital Project Manager with P-Bot. Joining me is Wendy Colley, the City Traffic Engineer. We are here today with an ordinance to accept a grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation's All Roads Transportation Safety Program and to execute an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT for the delivery of Southeast Division Street, 148th to 174th Avenue Project. Next slide, please. Southeast Division Street is designated as a high-crash network street in the city of Portland. It has historically ranked as having some of the highest numbers of fatal and serious injury crashes involving people driving, walking, and biking. P-Bot has been working on a multi-pronged approach to improve safety along the Outer Southeast Division Street Corridor for over 10 years. Our work has included ongoing educational outreach efforts in the community to help people stay safe while driving, walking, and biking. Our work has included traffic enforcement in the form of implementing and enforcing safer speed limits through the installation of speed reader boards, speed safety cameras, and periodic enforcement efforts with Portland Police. And finally, our work has included several capital investments along the corridor over the years to improve safety for all modes. This has included installing additional streetlights, infilling sidewalk, constructing accessible corner ramps, installing additional signalized pedestrian crossings, physically separating the bike lane from the vehicle travel lanes, paving the roadway, and installing segments of raised center medians between Southeast 80th and Southeast 174th. Next slide, please. The conversion of the two-way left-turn lane to a raised center median on Southeast Division is one of the most important safety countermeasures that we've applied on the corridor to help address the high incidence of pedestrian driveway turning and angle crashes, excuse me. I'll now turn the presentation over to Wendy Colley to discuss P-Bot's use of this tool on the corridor and related traffic and economic impacts.
Thank you, Liz. Next slide, please.
Oh, no. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, next slide, please. Thank you. So as you can see, when we applied for this grant, we looked at five years of crash data. And what we saw in outer division, on this particular section of outer division, is that there were sixteen fatal, serious and injury crashes, a hundred and nine moderate and minor injury crashes and sixty-eight property damage only crashes. In twenty sixteen alone, five people died in traffic crashes on outer division. Four people were walking and one person was driving. It was this tragically high number of deaths that led P-Bot to seek state funding for state, for safety improvements on division. With the installation of a raised concrete median, we expect to reduce all crash types by forty-seven percent, which means that we could expect a reduction or ninety-one fewer crashes and seven fewer fatal and serious injury crashes. When we submitted this application to ODOT for safety funding, it was the second highest ranking project in ODOT Region One. The benefits are there. They're real. The economic impacts of the crashes that are happening out there. For one fatal or serious injury crash, the economic impact is one million dollars. So we would expect to see economic impacts or fewer economic impacts if we can reduce crashes out there to the tune of fifteen million dollars for a reduction in fatal and serious injury crashes or twenty-five million dollars in total crashes. So not only will this project save lives and heartache for the many families impacted by traffic violence on division, it'll reduce economic impacts from traffic crashes in East Portland. And I'll turn it back over to Liz now.
Thank you, Wendy. And next slide, please. So the next project on Southeast Division will complete the two remaining gaps in access management on Southeast Division within P-Bot's right of way. This includes the segment between Southeast one hundred and fifty-second and one sixtieth and Southeast one hundred and sixty-sixth to one seventy-fourth. The total combined area for both of these segments is approximately seven tenths of a mile. The scope includes converting the two-way center turn lane to raised center median. Similar to other segments along the corridor, we will provide breaks at the median for left turns and U-turns approximately every quarter to one third of a mile. The map before you highlights our project area, but does not currently show where we will have breaks in the median for left turns, U-turns and pedestrian crossings. This will be determined during the design phase and will be informed not only by existing conditions, but through our engagement with the surrounding community and business and property owners on Southeast Division. Next slide, please. P-Bot will be working to deliver this project over the next two years. The design phase, including our public engagement work, will begin this fall and continue through the summer of twenty twenty-four. We will then bring this project back to council in the fall of twenty-four to report on the final design and our public engagement work and to authorize P-Bot and procurement to advertise this project for construction. We will then construct the improvements beginning early of twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. And most importantly, we wanted to touch upon our, our public involvement plan for this next project. P-Bot has previously conducted outreach on Southeast Division within this project area as part of the Division Safety Project. Our focus at that time was primarily on the added signalized pedestrian crossings as well as parking removal related to the protected bike lanes that were installed in twenty twenty-two. However, we did speak broadly about the Bureau's intent to access manage the entire corridor on Southeast Division between Southeast Eightieth and one seventy-fourth. As we begin work on the design of this project, we will be re-engaging the community in this area to specifically discuss the design of the raised center median within these current gaps. Our outreach will start with large scale notifications and an open house for neighbors and business and property owners. And then we'll become focused on direct canvassing and engagement with businesses and properties on the corridor, including dense housing areas to help ensure that our design works to support their needs while also meeting the project's stated safety goals. Finally, as part of our collective Vision Zero safety work on the corridor, P-Bot will be conducting, conducting one, three and five year post-project evaluations. These evaluations will not only collect quantitative data such as traffic speeds and crash data, but also qualitative data in the form of community user experience surveys. The capital investments to date on the corridor have undoubtedly been transformational. We are hopeful that the traffic data and community feedback we collect will ultimately show that these are positive changes that improve safety and support people living, working and traveling along this corridor. We have already begun collecting data as we approached the one-year mark of completing the Division Safety Project. Initial findings show a reduction of top end speeding in some areas. And initial community surveys are showing that a slight majority, or fifty-three percent of respondents feel the project has had a positive impact on safety and approximately twenty percent of respondents currently being neutral on the project. We hope to improve upon these initial findings as we continue our work and engagement on the corridor. Will be using the data we collect to not only inform any future work on this corridor, but also our work on other high crash network streets in the city of Portland. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this project and discuss our work on Southeast Division. We welcome any questions from council at this time.
Very good. Colleagues. Commissioner Gonzalez.
In terms of public engagement process for this go around, uh, thank you for kind of the summary. How will it be different than prior efforts at public engagement, specifically on division, but just, you know, on, on, on outer east side?
Yeah. Thank you. That's a great question. And we've talked about this with Commissioner Maps' office of, you know, really taking the lessons learned from the the Division Safety Project and our outreach there and learning and growing from that. We had a very robust outreach effort across P-Bot's Safety Project and TriMet's Division Transit Project as we applied similar improvements along the corridor. We engaged the community in many levels, open houses, direct meetings, canvassing on foot multiple times. So we engaged partners in the community to help with that outreach, doing it in language. But we didn't always hear back from, from folks that were ultimately being impacted. And so I think this time around, we're going to be especially sensitive and make sure that we're having those conversations with businesses and property owners. So not taking, you know, a, a lack of response from business as, you know, being supportive of the design. And so during construction, we found out there were businesses that had freight needs, for example, that we weren't aware of. And so we had to pivot quickly during construction. We want to try to prevent that this time around. And so we'll really be focusing our efforts to ensure that those conversations happen.
And if I may jump, jump in here, I appreciate P-Bot's response to that question. And I also want to reassure Commissioner Gonzalez and everyone else on council and everyone else in this neighborhood that I'm paying attention to this project very closely. I've been out in the community and talked to folks who are likely to be impacted um, um, by the safety improvement projects. And I pledge that as long as I have this assignment, I will continue to do that work. And I do believe that if we work together, listen to each other, increase the trust that's at the table, which frankly, I think is some of the work that we need to do here. We can uh, bring this project to fruition, which will dramatically reduce deaths on one of our deadliest streets in the city while also uh, bringing, while also having infrastructure which allows the people who use the street to roll, work, play in this space productively. That's my goal and I'm holding myself accountable to getting this one done.
Helpful. Just two other areas of questions. In terms of prior safety work done on division, did we have assumptions on bike adoption going in? And any data on actual bike usage change post improvements? I'm just sort of curious because, you know, one of the pieces of feedback I get from outer east side is that we impose upon outer east side a view of transportation that really is reflective of inner east side values. You know, I cycle, my neighborhood cycles. We, but when you go deeper into east, for a lot of reasons, including the lack of good infrastructure out there for cycling, it's just different patterns. And I guess I'm sensitive to that concern that, you know, are we, we build it, do they actually come? You know, when we, when we add that, that kind of infrastructure, particularly as you get eighty, you know, eighty-second and east.
Absolutely. Um, I will say, so for division, our work related to the bike lanes was really all about safety. So there were existing bike lanes along the entire stretch of the corridor before our project. What we did is enhance the safety of those bike lanes by physically separating them on the corridor. So it was less about, I mean, ultimately safer facilities and more comfortable facilities can increase the, the rates and numbers of people biking, but that wasn't our goal for this project.
Got it. So there was no explicit assumptions about additional biking adoption on the previous project, but there was certainly safety assumptions and reduced fatality.
Yeah, the, the, the previous design on the corridor had the, the five-foot bike lane adjacent to the outer travel lane. And we did have a fatality of a person biking where the car left the travel lane and encroached into the bike lane and hit them from behind.
Got it. Uh, and the, and the other sort of public safety component out there is that, you know, our fire stations were built in that part of the city when there was a different district. It wasn't actually part of the city for many of them. And their spacing was based on assumptions of free flow on division. So every time we do speed reduction, particularly in southeast, we are adding to response times, no, no matter how good the engineering is. It's a, it's just a reality of speed bumps and taking away left turns. So I guess I'm just, I know fire is engaged in these things. There, uh, there's always a, sometimes a push and pull. Is there very focused on response times? But I'm just remind me of what the process is going to be there. And, and again, southeast is a deep southeast particularly sensitive just because of the way those, those fire stations were built differently than inner east side. So just curious what that looks like.
Absolutely. Thanks for that question. So during the design of the Division Safety Project, we engaged extensively with police and fire. And so the final design that we have for the medians on division, and we'll continue this design with the next, next project, is we have constructed mountable medians for emergency response. So you'll notice if you're out there, the, the curbs of the median are curved to allow police and fire to mount that median in the event that both through travel lanes are congested with traffic. We tested, uh, we did a pilot of, of this mountable median in North Portland. We tested it with fire. We had our team's traffic engineers ride in the truck just to explore the feasibility of this and the comfort of it. We were very sensitive to, to this change in East Portland. Portland Fire has some of the fastest response times in this area of the entire city of Portland. Primarily, we assume because the road was wide open, they could just drive directly down that center turn lane and not have to worry about traffic not moving out of the way. So we were dramatically changing that. And so we worked with them on that. And as part of our post-project evaluation, we'll be following up with both police and fire. And just, you know, collecting additional feedback, lessons learned to keep applying it for our Vision Zero safety work.
And just to remind our, my colleagues, so City Gate One recommended two additional fire stations in Southeast Portland absent alternative responses being identified. And that's just based on population currently, to certain extent, projected. When we slow down the roads, we lengthen response times. And she's absolutely correct, division was, you know, the, it was designed with the assumption of wide open roads that you could cover wide sections of, of that region responsibly and quickly. And, you know, many of the public safety things that we're doing on the roads are just inevitably going to increase time. So it's, it is a trade-off here and we, we put, anyways, that's just, it's one of the, just want to keep that out there. Can you just, so the meridian you're describing, they drive up on the meridian or are they able to cross the meridian into the lane, the other lane? Just to make sure I'm understanding what you're describing.
Potentially both, probably cross, crossing the median is probably more feasible for police cars versus fire. But fire can get the set of wheels on one side of the vehicle up onto the median. Should traverse around a congested travel lane if that's the situation. Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good. Any other questions? We have public testimony?
We have two individuals signed up.
Very good. Three minutes each, please. Name for the record.
First is Sarah Iannarone.
Welcome.
Morning, Portland City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Sarah Iannarone. For the record, I'm the Executive Director of the Street Trust. I'm joining you rather casually today via Zoom outside one of our local day shelters where my team and I are conducting listening sessions with, on how individuals regarding pedestrian safety in particular with a project funded by ODOT to understand how we can prevent those fatalities. So I'll make sure I share those results with you. I'm here to advocate strongly for the acceptance of ODOT's two-point-four-million-dollar grant for the Southeast Division Street project between one forty-eighth and one hundred and seventy-fourth avenues. As an organization committed to advocating for more accessible, equitable and prosperous streets, especially our main streets and commercial corridors, the Street Trust cannot overemphasize the urgent necessity of these safety investments. A startling eighty percent of Portland's fatal crashes this year occurred on our high crash network, over half of which involved speeding and a fifth involved left turns. These grim statistics underline the vital need for transformative changes on our streets. However, equally crucial is our redoubled effort in community engagement and education surrounding the universal benefits for all street users, including motorists and firefighters of safe streets initiatives and investments. Safety is a shared responsibility and establishing a common understanding and commitment is successful to implementation. We applaud the program evaluation mechanisms proposed by P-Bot and urge City Council and P-Bot to more actively promote the public health and economic benefits of safety investments like those on outer division. These walkable, bikeable, bikeable and transit-friendly commercial corridors are good for business. As businesses see an increase in foot traffic and revenue from safer streets, the resulting economic boost can lead to increased tax revenue and even job creation. Moreover, safer streets which reduce fatalities make a positive impact on public health by providing more opportunities, physical activity, helping to combat rising obesity rates and even diabetes. These investments can lead to lower healthcare costs for employers, lower household costs for workers and a healthier population role, benefiting our city's budget and the public tax in positive ways. We implore City Council to not waver in its commitment to these safety investments in outer division. We must redesign and upgrade our streets to foster slower operating speeds, especially on the deadliest corridors, which are both a necessity and a threat in many Portlanders' daily lives. So today I ask you to vote in favor of accepting this grant to vote for the transformation of our streets into safer, more accessible routes for all who traverse them. This can be a significant stride toward a future where our roads are not a hazard, but a conduit to prosperity and livability for every Portlander. I thank you for your time and commitment to our city's safety. And I just want to add that I'm happy to consult with anyone regarding reduced speeds and level of service and congestion and other things. As a person who's working on things like the regional transportation plan update and some of the modeling for our bigger highway projects, I'm happy to give you a briefing on level of service and reduced speeds anytime you want, sarah@strettrust.org. Thank you very much. Be safe and have a great day.
Thank you.
Next is Robert Butler.
Welcome, sir.
Uh, I'm Robert Butler, resident of Portland. I'm amazed. We've been told that this section of Division Street's already been completed. September fourteenth of last year, P-Bot reported the project was essentially done. And we were also told that there is vigorous, robust citizen participation for that section. And we also saw medians put in, traffic signals put in, traffic lighting put in, cross street, crosswalks. All of that appears to be done. And I'm just totally amazed that we're coming out with a project again. And we're using statistics that don't reflect the improvements that have been out there. Instead, we're using statistics that are prior to the improvements that have been made. Secondly, I, I asked the mayor before that putting under the same commissioner, the Water Bureau and P-Bot is a big mistake. It is. And it's been proven already. We did meet with the commissioner, about thirty-five of us in Southeast Portland. And we, we gave our complaints. We said, we gotta go back to the drawing board and redo this. We're not talking about going back to the drawing board. In fact, we never heard again from the commissioner. So there is a credibility gap of what this commissioner can do for us. And at the same time, the absolute disaster of the two-billion-dollar filtration idea, when we can use ultraviolet, this commissioner is failing us. Now, who else failed? Now, who else failed this is Tilstrum, and she evidently married the project manager for TriMet. So we got the project manager for P-Bot and TriMet married to each other. That's my, that's my estimation. What a huge conflict of interest. Now, the real dirty little secret is that TriMet wants to take all of our medians that we have out there, we're putting them there for safety, and fill in-between. And the only reason they want to fill in-between, so no one can use that gap in the median to make a left turn and possibly slow down the buses in the restricted lane. Now, that's apparently where this money is going to be going, is the deal between this husband and wife. I call them Bonnie and Clyde. So I have a lot of reservations accepting this money with the idea that this ridiculous, zigzagging disaster unlike any other street system in the United States is going to have any chance of being reproduced. Instead, we need to put the money in to fixing the problems we have, and that's an engineering analysis of our failures.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I quickly jump in here?
Sure, Maps.
Number, thank you, Robert. Thank you for your testimony today. I understand your frustration. As an elected official, I signed up for that. At least in my experience, all the staff who have worked on this project have operated with integrity and a whole lot of patience. I have, as you, as we both acknowledge, I have gone out to this neighborhood and met with folks who are impacted both by previous safety improvements, and I've gone out and talked to folks who are potentially impacted by some future safety improvements that we want to do and fund with this ordinance for us today. You know, we are in dialogue with folks, especially at the Russian market, basically trading ideas back and forth about how we can introduce some modifications in this space that makes sense for everybody while also supporting, while also supporting safety. These conversations are challenging, but we are in dialogue, and we're looking for solutions, and we'll continue to approach this project and this work in that spirit. I do want to point out also that these dollars are state dollars which cannot be redirected to a new project. So even if it's my top priority, I could not take this grant and use it to fill potholes. This is a state grant specifically designed for safety improvements. If we choose to vote this ordinance down today, that money stays in the state coffers, and the state will allocate it to some jurisdiction that does want to make safety improvements. So that is the basic lay of the land. I hear everybody's frustration. I am trying to work with everybody to build the best Division Street that we possibly can, and I'm committed to doing this work even when the work is tough. And I want to thank everyone who's testified and participated in this discussion, and I encourage you to stay at this table. I think we can get this right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There's no hope of this working, Mr. Mayor, and the ball's in your court.
Thank you. It's actually in the council's court. Thank you. Does that complete public testimony?
Yes.
Very good. This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Ruvio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, 657.
Authorized bid solicitation and contracting with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for construction of the South McAdam Avenue to South Bancroft Street water mains project at an estimated cost of $1 million.
This is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Portland Water Bureau. This ordinance authorizes the Portland Water Bureau to solicit competitive bids from contractors to install approximately 1,400 feet of new ductile iron water main to the backbone of Portland's water system. The existing 24-inch steel water main in this location was originally installed in 1893. I believe Grover Cleveland was probably president during that time, which makes this pipe 125 years old. I will tell you, we've already had to go in and repair it three times. It's best to replace it now. So here to tell us more about this ordinance that we have before us today, we have Ken Ackerman, Engineering Manager with the Water Bureau. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Can I have a PowerPoint? So this is the South McAdam project. Next slide, please. So as part of our plan to replace, we have about 2,200 feet or 2,200 miles of pipe in our system currently. We need to replace about 1 million feet of pipe, and by 2040, that's about 190 miles of the system. That's an average replacement of about 50,000 feet of pipe a year. Part of our plan to do that is to contract some of the projects. This is one of those projects. It's increasing our ability of what we can do in-house. Next slide, please. So this project was chosen, it's actually, when we originally had it slated for design, it was 125. It's actually reached 130 years old now. It's been repaired three times in the last 10 years. There's a high consequence of failure. This is immediately adjacent to I-5. It's a big main. It's 24 inches, so there's a lot of water that comes out of this. It's also, McAdam Avenue is a very busy street as well, so there's a lot of impact to traffic when this main has a break. So when we'll be replacing it, it's literally, it's between 1,000 and 1,400 feet. There's been a little bit of design revision since we originally started this project. We'll be adding two fire hydrants in this area. There's a lot of apartments here, so we're adding two fire hydrants to improve fire safety. We will be doing some of the work at night. We'll be closing the off-ramp off of I-5 to tie into our existing system. In order to do that, we have to shut that down. We're working with Oregon Department of Transportation to coordinate that, but to limit the impacts to the traveling public, we'll be doing that at night. And so the new pipe will mitigate safety in our system and make sure that we provide water, high-water quality. Next slide, please. So as part of the public outreach for this project, we've been doing mailers, we've been meeting with the neighborhoods. We will continue to do that as we get the contractor selected and get exact timing, especially for the closure of the off-ramp. So we'll be doing that and working with ODOT for signing along I-5, so everybody that knows that it's going to happen. So, next slide. So with that, any questions?
Just an obvious one. So the night work, it's in a heavily populated residential neighborhood. Is it going to be loud, and if so, for how long?
It will be loud, so we're going to do it as quickly as we can. We're hoping to have this work done in about a month's worth of time, so.
Okay, good. And you don't have the exact timeframe yet, is that correct?
Correct. Once we get the contractor on board, we will have the exact timeframe, and we'll be notifying residents of when that work is going to occur.
Okay. And I noticed, did it say late 2023?
Yes, we're planning, we'd like to go out to bid this fall and start work late this year and go into next spring.
Okay, good. And I would just encourage you to continue your public outreach and prepare people well for some potentially fitful sleep for a bit.
We will try to get it done as quick as we can, yes.
Awesome. I'm sure they would like their sewer pipes to work, so.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Any other obvious questions? Do we have public testimony?
No one signed up.
All right, very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item is a second reading, 658.
Authorized competitive solicitation and contract for the design, permitting, construction documentation, and construction administration services for the North Portland Aquatic Center.
Colleagues, this is a second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. We've already heard a presentation and had public testimony. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Very exciting project for North Portland. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Ruvio.
Happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
I think this is great. I just want to say one thing. I have noticed an uptick in interest nationally in the question of drownings, and, which are often highly preventable. And the reality is, swimming infrastructure, aquatic infrastructure, is very expensive, both to build and to maintain. But it is so important that people have access to a place not only where they can cool off, but I think it's really important for people to have the opportunity to learn to swim. And when you look at the statistics around the deaths by drowning anywhere in the country, you see a significant overrepresentation of deaths by drowning in areas where people have lower income. And so I just, you know, I realize it's a tough climb to build a lot of swimming pools, but we should continue to have the kind of interest that this city has historically had in building and maintaining these aquatic facilities. I think this is a grand vision, and I'm highly supportive of it, and I'm very happy to vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.